I'd like to welcome everybody to the Nevada Community School District Board of Education meeting, May twenty twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. And having said that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would seek approval of the agenda with item seven removed.
Remove the agenda, striking item seven, superintendent evaluation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a meeting. Brian, do we have any public comment?
No.
We have none. Let's move right into the information section. We have a board salute. We don't do this often enough, but Mr. Clem, tonight's your night.
You did send me a couple links I saw.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you want to try to put one of those up? Do you want me to try to put one?
If you can get the YouTube.
Let me see if I can pull that up for you.
Apologize, I sent them so late. I just was at my office thinking, I wonder if I got any info on this thing.
There now I'll have volume on. I didn't realize it.
Do you have anybody joining us tonight, Joe?
No, just me.
Well, I thought it said it connected, so. Technical difficulty. Apparently that's not going to work. On the Miller like, uh, Miller Live Arc welder system that was donated by Almeco to our high school welding program. I believe the estimated value on that was twenty thousand dollars. Apparently, we can't get the video.
Who's taking the picture?
I will.
Okay. Mr. Clem, would you come up and join us?
Hey, how you doing?
Let's get the formality of.
Just let me know how you're getting on.
We usually do it back here. Board. How many times you've done this? You got four thirteen meters. Okay. Thank you. He gets hold of that.
Alright.
Get the board all tucked in. It's good.
Nice.
Got it.
Well, thank you folks for the recognition. I wanted to hear more about. Yeah, just briefly.
Yeah, I know if you want to tell us about it.
Uh, so it's, it was the first one in the country. And it was something that we helped Miller, who makes welders, develop. And, uh, what it is, is it's this big computer with big computer screens. And it has a gun, like a normal welder would, that has a bunch of sensors on it. And then the table that you work on also has a bunch of sensors on it. And so what you can do is you can select the different materials that you want to practice on and put those into the computer. And then you go ahead and take your gun and you act like you're running a weld. Act like you're welding, but there's no arc, there's no flash, there's nothing like that. It can measure the distance, um, that you're away from the material. It can measure the angle that you're at, um, at three hundred and sixty degrees around. It can measure the speed at what you're running. And then what it can do, that once you do a test pass, then it pulls the information up on the screen. And it tells you what you were doing right and what you were doing wrong. And it actually, then you can take that information out and print it out and the welders can look at it, study it. And it, and they can see what they need to do differently and they, they can go back and do another pass. And so it doesn't cost any wire. So the traditional way of doing it is you just get a bunch of what are called coupons, which are these little rectangular pieces of steel in all different thicknesses or aluminum or stainless or whatever else, and you just start welding them. And then you have one of the supervisors come over and look at it. And then they tell you whether you're doing it correctly or not. The other thing they can do is they'll put their hat on and look over your shoulder and watch what you're doing as well. And so it's just a really neat tool that we were able to use to, to train our people. Uh, and to get them up to speed, uh, quicker on, uh, you know, how to be able to produce a quality product that, that, um, you know, meets the specifications that we're looking for. So I guess, does that make sense? Yeah. You said this was the first one ever produced? First one in the country. So I, I, I was at my office just hanging out, waiting to come up here. So I thought I'd do some research and see if I could, uh, you know, find the original information that we had on this. And so I found the emails and these are the ones that I sent to Steve. And, uh, I actually watched them, uh, to, you know, get a little bit of a refresher on it. And I didn't even remember that that was the case until, um, I had actually sent it to, um, one of Joe and I's friends, Sean Murphy, at the time. And I found that email and that was what I put, shared with him is it was one of the first ones, uh, in the country. So just a really neat tool, um, that we have. We kind of outgrew it a little bit, um, for what we're doing. And so we obviously were very engaged with developing the welding program here at the school. We helped design that whole, uh, facility and are very invested in the community. Um, you know, uh, the trades are getting fewer and far between as far as people being involved in those. And, uh, they're becoming more and more valuable, whether it's a welder or a plumber or a carpenter or whatever else it, it might be. And so we're, uh, very passionate about, um, spending time with the, uh, the younger folks in the community. Sharing with them that are interested in this. And, uh, it, it is fun to see. Um, I work with some young, uh, people, um, from like Marshalltown and Nevada and some other places that are in high school. And there's people that just want to be welders. We actually employ, um, Cameron Linder.
Yep.
And she is senior maybe or?
Yes.
Here in Nevada. And she is a full-fledged welder at Almeco.
And did very well.
Yes, and it did very well. And just won an award of some type. I'm trying to remember. I'd have to go back to the Facebook page. And I apologize, I'm, I'm kind of windy. I talk too much.
That's a good story.
But, but yeah, it's just fun to see, um, uh, this woman.
I think Mark mentioned to NEDC board one morning that she did a pre-test with you folks. And your entire operation was abuzz that day at how well she did.
Yeah, and it, the reality is, is that it's, uh, there's a lot fewer women in the welding trade than there are men, just the way it is. Uh, and we actually have employed a number of very talented female welders. Once they decide they like it and they want to do it, they're gonna go out after it and, and just do the job. And it's just, uh, it's, it's really fun to, to see that, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your support.
Yeah, so it's not an actual welder, it's a welding training tool. It's just a training tool, yeah. And, uh, you can probably forward the videos.
I will forward them the link.
Because they do do a good job. It's, it's, uh, interesting because the people in those videos are so much younger than they are today when I was watching them. Uh, but one of the individuals, uh, wasn't, what did, how do you say it? An adjunct professor at D Mac? Uh, and he was the welding instructor. Um, and he learned to weld at Almeco. And then went to D Mac and then was a teacher. And he's, he's one of the gentlemen that's in the video that's explaining about it and how it works and that type of thing. So that's kind of fun.
Tell everybody thank you on behalf of the school.
Yeah, I will. Well, thank you. Alright, well, I'm gonna leave you guys to it.
Yeah, we got a little couple.
We're gonna work on the technology because this next group's gonna want to use this. You can get it working, enjoy the video and thank you again.
Thank you. Get them safe.
Keep up the good work and, uh, yeah, thanks for all you guys are doing. I know you're doing it for the pay.
Yeah, the perks and the pay.
Yeah, there you go. Alright.
Thank you.
Take care. And I want to copy that picture.
Go get it.
I bet you.
This Mel, Mills isn't coming tonight?
Yeah. Uh, I, I, yeah, that's what he said on remind.
Okay, but we're, uh, we kind of glitched here, so we're kind of in the middle of a, this would be like an intermission.
Yeah.
Yeah, he had his church board meeting today, so kind of interfered.
You'll get there someday. Somebody figures out you have some talent and some skills, I want you to help them on everything.
I'm not sure what happened. I've never seen, here we go, we got something. Maybe not. I've never seen these shut off all at once like that.
Yeah, because they went, I was watching.
They all shut off at the same time?
They did. And I don't know what, I don't know what I did or if I, if it was me. No.
It said that it was on HDMI, does it need to be set on something else?
We're having trouble with it. I can't even get them all to turn back on.
Yeah, I mean, the HDMI port, that's like usually just like a cable connecting to it, so it might be something else.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they all shut up. And now it doesn't want to connect like it's not.
Someone from the robotics team could probably solve this. I know you're.
Getting anxious.
Take a look at it.
I forgot what the new boxes are called, Joe.
Is there like a way to change that input? Or is there like a?
Can you unplug the box and plug it back in behind the TV?
Could you hit it? Just hit it?
Hit it.
Where that box is at?
Box is here.
Most excitement we've had in the meeting for a number of months. Power goes. You're gonna get co-credit on this.
I mean, that's like, the best way to do it is just unplug it and plug it back in. It works like almost all the time.
But it's just not, it's not wanting me to connect now.
Well, this is progress.
This is progress.
You have a different number on there. Does that mean anything?
I'm supposed to be able to enter that number and we should be connected.
No. Does it have like O three nine five or something?
I blew link like before, it's probably not good.
Ow, ow.
John, it's just not giving me the opportunity to. It's giving me the colorblind app along, getting it. So of all nights, well, we rarely, rarely, we rarely use this and then tonight we would like to.
I guess we're gonna have to have some verbal pictures.
Can you share that with everybody? It's out, but you can gather.
What do you mean?
Like sending an email or something, the presentation?
Well, do you think it's, uh, the TV or the computer? Probably not a TV, right? That's.
Yeah, I think the system here is just not talking to each other.
You only, you're not, they're not synced up. You've only got this one showing. Try connecting large conference room in there. Can't connect that. Would it help to have all of them?
What if, what if we tried using your Chrome?
Mine?
It says you can use Casta.
Looks like we're getting it. Aren't the other three on? So we can't pull up the, the conference room and go in there and watch?
Can you go up to your apps and they go on the screen? What's, what's like the TV called?
Gates Auditorium.
There's like NC as the large conference room, would it be that?
No. Auditorium sleeves.
He said it was supposed to be for a six foot one person, so.
That's good, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
I can tell whether it looked like it was a.
Yeah, no, I don't think it was meant to be joke.
There's no like, I don't know, ways to change it anymore, like.
Let me try one more thing. Well, I don't think we're gonna have the visual.
Mine says connecting.
Yeah, it's with a calendar now.
Okay. I wonder if you could like.
Can you, is there a cable you can just?
I wonder if you could just use that cable, like that.
You can try it. Do you have, does your Chromebook have the, uh, the HDMI connection on it? No.
Is there any HDMI for it?
Let me look at mine.
Did I feel like, maybe we could like bring up this?
I have, yeah. Do you know what port we're ready to plug in?
Where's my board packet? Why don't you find the board?
Extremely short.
Yeah, it's not really very good.
It looks like there's slack here, huh?
Yeah.
It's like.
I didn't want to pull too hard, but you can.
Or just like.
Oh, we're online. Yeah, we are streaming.
Oh, that's funny.
Oh, we're.
It's like tank.
Don't worry. Joe still will be in tomorrow.
Joe will fix it all, don't worry.
Okay, we got it covered.
Hold on, that, this one's here. I'll stick it back right.
Okay. That didn't follow. They even have, okay.
There.
Now can you switch? Oh. Switch to a better. Did you ever vote this TV?
Yeah, I remember, I think like I'm.
Challenging with all sorts of things, Steve.
So what year of school are you in?
I'm in, I'm a sophomore right now and going into junior.
Have you ever thought about being on the school board?
I, I mean.
Tom, you got it from here.
There you go.
No, I just, I.
We are in need of two, or one to two, uh, as a student member or student support.
That one. Right now. I think there's a legal thresholding for being here. Well, we got openings. Now that you've been here, see how it works.
Is there like a way to like open the airplane?
No, this is a different system.
You're so close. Covering the, oh. He's covering the infrared thing.
Oh, that Joe.
Oh, I see what he's done. Okay. He's really gonna have to fix our messes tomorrow. Tell him we're sorry.
Maybe it's HDMI three then.
Okay.
There we go.
Between the robotics club and school board mission, you don't know.
You're up.
Caleb? Thank you for showing up to the meeting tonight, just like you did for Farm Bureau. Take it away.
You want to, you, you can start with like, she, she can start with like the first part and then I can do the classroom stuff.
You want to introduce yourself? We are recording and we are streaming.
Okay. My name is Caleb Byenson.
And I'm Savannah Klein.
Welcome.
Um, we are here to talk about the Nevada High School Robotics Club. And the Nevada High School Robotics Club, we learned to design, build, program and use our robots to their fullest effect. Our club manager, Mr. Mills, has helped us assemble our arena and provide some basic leftover parts from years past. But obviously, this is costly and especially extra robot parts. As an Nevada High School Robotics Club, we have tried to go to two tournaments this year. Um, it's also a somewhat of school-supported activity. It, they have allowed us to order parts that we've needed to. Um, and we would meet before, sometimes after and during school. And he even has a new class, a new robotics class. We started to build our robotic, robot about six weeks before our first tournament. In those six weeks, we would mostly meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays to develop and brainstorm ideas. With ideas, we have came up with this robot. Should be two down. One more.
Just let me know when you want me to switch.
That is our robot that we have been working on and we started working on it about like six weeks ago. Six weeks before our first tournament. And the photo on the far right is the game field that we had the opportunity to build in Mr. Mills's classroom for us to, um, practice on it and get ready for the tournaments that we were going to go to. But due to weather, we weren't be, we weren't able to because it was snowing. Um, we had presented twice for Farm Bureau, twice, one for Kiwanis and then the other one for Farm Bureau. And we had received a five hundred dollar check from each of them. And that's how we covered all the game field parts. And then there's just a little visual of like all the annual expenses that we have for each year and how like much it costs and what we use the money from Kiwanis and Farm Bureau for.
Okay, um, so I was a part of the, like, the robotics class at the school, which is a first-time thing for Mills. This is the first year that it happened and it's been a really fun experience to have. And it's almost coming to an end because like, of course, school year's almost done. But this, these pictures here, this was like towards the middle of the school year, I'd say, where we developed these, um, like catapults and lifts and stuff that just, um, they're like active manipulators. That's what you call them. And they were, those were pretty fun to build and got us just going on some ideas. Can you go to the next slide? I don't know why it's not there, but there is pictures there. Okay. Um, and then this was also part of the class. There was an, um, an online, um, programming thing that, uh, like led us practice like our programming portion. And that's what we got from the team registration that allowed us to access this. Excellent. And then, um, this is a video of our class tournament that we had just like a week ago. Are you able to hit play on that?
It's not showing it. They, it's always showing as an image here.
Okay, well, I can just, um, can you go back for a second? Yeah, there's, in that top left corner, that was our robot. And we went through like several iterations of like the, there's this puncher thing. It's hard to see, I know, but. So we originally had like a catapult and then that just wasn't working so well. And we switched to this puncher idea and it worked really well. And that's a thing I just like about this class is that you can reiterate on your past, um, prototypes and stuff. And it just, that's just a fun part of the class. And then you can also see like other robots in there. We, we did several different drives, like there was a tank drive there. You can see like on the bottom right. And that makes it pretty easy to get over the bar. And then there was just a holonomic drive. That was our drive. It's a pretty funky drive, but like it allows you to go in all different directions and really maneuverable. And that was fun to build. So, yeah, another competition. And then for next year, um, the next game is called High Stakes. And you have to try and get these rings on these goals and it's gonna be a pretty fun challenge to take up.
Yeah, we also have already got the game field for that, but we s, we would be able to build it, but we have to take it down before the summer starts. So like we can't fully assemble like that.
Why do you have to take it down?
I think they're working on like the floors and stuff.
Yeah, like every, every year there's a new game and we just usually want to take it down. Like it's good to clean up before like the next year. So you have a fresh start, I guess.
Could you go back to the, the current game field and explain the, the goal here of what your, this game field is about?
Okay, yeah, so in this game, it's called Over Under. That was last year's game. Um, basically, the goal in this game is to get as many tri balls, which are the green balls and like the red and blue ones, over into your offensive zone in your goal. And it's like five points if you get it in your goal and two points if you get it in your offensive zone. And so what Carter and I did, that was my friend in the class who helped me build the robot. We just, um, so there's this, um, technique in the game called like match loading. In the corner, like you can see, you're allowed, if your robot's touching the corner, you can like feed balls in your robot and get a bunch of balls in your offensive zone that scores a lot of points. And so that's what Carter and I did with our puncher and it worked really well. And then at, towards the end, we just tried to push in as many balls as we could in the goal. That also worked pretty well.
So the, the offensive zones are those corners then or are they actually the net?
Or like, the offensive zones is like, so like, just think of it like splitting it down the middle, like it's the entire area. This is your offensive zone and then the other side is the other team's offensive zone.
So it's like midfield, basically?
Yeah.
And you get more points if you get it under the net?
Yeah, if you get, if you get the balls under the net into the goal. And, and then at the end of the game, like if your robot is, um, off the ground, you can get some points. Like you see those poles right there? That's also another aspect of the game. You can climb up those poles and whoever is the highest gets the most points. And that would have been pretty fun to build, but we just didn't not, like, we didn't really have time for that.
So there's multiple strategies for each game and multiple point schemes, basically?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different techniques you can use to win the game and.
So you guys are using a catapult system for your? So you guys are using a catapult system for your, to move your balls?
Yeah, and that, that was, that was like easily the most efficient way to score points, I think. Cause, and it was just really awesome to build. Just, cause we went through so many designs and the first ones just didn't work too well, cause they wouldn't go into the offensive zone. But once we got to this puncher, and by the way, I had to do this like on my own without Carter, cause he had appendicitis at the time. So I was, I just kinda started it off and. Yeah, and then once we figured out this puncher thing, it was, it just worked really well and it just felt good to actually see your build work, you know, and then.
So the other robots on the game field there, are those other iterations that you guys tried, or are those just previous years?
Yeah, sorry, those are from like other, um, members that were in the class. And so like we were assigned, in the game, there's like two alliances, so it's like a, just a two versus two. And, yeah, those are the other robots that were designed. One of them was a tank drive there. And then there's this other one that tried to make a catapult, but it wasn't very successful.
So your, your class was building multiple robots, basically?
Yeah.
And how many could you take to the competition?
Um, well, in the competition, you're, you're just like on your own, just one robot and your team, and then you get paired up with a different team. That's, you're like your teammate.
But as a class, though, Nevada, as the Nevada team that goes to the tournament, how many robots can you guys take?
Just one.
Just one?
Yeah, it's, it's just one, and then like.
So you guys battled it off to figure out which robot was going?
Or we were just doing that just like to have fun, because the competitions got canceled, of course. And so like, we might as well use the game field for something, so that's what we did, and it was fun.
Hugging the questions here.
I do it with Cooper. Cooper should ask a lot of questions.
And then also, um, one more thing, like you were talking about like the climbing. Like you can also see, um, sorry, the other game field, like the new one. There's that big thing in the center, and that's also, if you climb up that, you get points. And that's gonna be interesting to figure out how to climb up that.
Yeah, that'll be a challenge. Pretty cool. Tell me again, how many people are in your club?
Um, it's, it's small right now, but like, hopefully, we're trying to get more people. I think, well, like right now, I guess it's just kind of Savannah and I, but there was like Jacob and Peter. So I'd say like, yeah, and Spencer, so it was more like five during the fall. And then like after the competition just got canceled, it was just like kind of us trying to present for robotics and fundraise.
So to be part of the club, do you have to be part of the class, or Dr. Mister Mills' class? No?
No, you don't, you don't have to. It's just helpful. It's really helpful, yeah. Like now that I did the class, I know a lot more about how to just build.
There's one tournament you guys go to at the end of the year?
Um, yeah, well, like the tournament that we usually go to is around January. And like the closest ones are like in Omaha and, and stuff, like they're pretty far out, so.
Was this tournament that you were going to that got canceled?
Um, that, the tournament we were gonna go to was also, was in Omaha, and it got canceled because of the like, it was just crappy weather, so.
I wouldn't January to find a good time to have tournaments.
Do we host a, a competition here in Nevada every year, or?
Um, well, we used to, you know, there's no pictures of it, but like, we, we used to host competitions, but they're just really long and difficult to host, of course. And Mills, Mills did do that, I think, like just a couple of years back.
I attended one.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, early on, it might have been the first one, if I remember. It was really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I think we might be able to host a competition of our own at some point, but like, it's, it is just pretty difficult to host, but if we have like volunteers and stuff, I think it'd be a lot easier.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Keep up the fundraising.
Yeah, yeah, I just thank you guys also for like fundraising the robotics, cause it's expensive stuff and it's just helpful when we get money, of course, for the club.
Yeah, cause we just, I think Mills said that we just ordered around three thousand and five hundred dollars worth of things for this, so.
Yeah.
Come back to Farm Bureau.
It sounds like a good experience, you know, you, you've touched on, you know, the kind of teamwork and cooperation and creativity it takes. And, and I, I witnessed that at the, at the tournament I attended, so.
Yeah, I think it's really good.
Not only cooperation among yourselves, but with other teams from other schools.
Yeah.
That was neat to see the, the collaboration going on during that.
Yeah, and then I also think it's just a really good thing to like build your engineering skills, like of just like redesigning your past iterations and making it just as best as possible.
Do both of you have interest in going on and doing something engineering-wise down the road, or do you not know, have an idea yet?
No, I'm thi- I'm thinking I wanna do like something involving like engineering or like maybe just science stuff. Like chemistry is also pretty fun.
I'm kinda in between like, cause I'm doing, I'm in, I'm currently in FFA right now, so I'm kinda currently in like ag-related stuff and like robotic kind of stuff, so it's kind of mixed, mixed emotions.
There's a future there for both.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Now there's agriculture, engineering too, right? Like for all the farming stuff.
There's robotics and farming on the, on the horizon, so.
Well, best of luck. Look forward to.
Good luck.
We might have you back if you got anything else you'd like to tell us about here coming up next year, so. Get out there on the circuit, you tell a good story, and that's how you raise your money, so. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good night. Nice troubleshoot.
There's gotta be a way to do this.
Okay, then. Well, we got through the information phase, and usually that's not the hard part of the meeting. So this brings us to our action agenda, and at five point one, we have the one hundred, one hundred series policy review.
Uh, the one hundred policy series is reviewed against the ISB Policy Reference Manual. You'll just see a few edits there. They're necessary. We need to indicate Associate Superintendent School Improvement Director on the first one. We've got four policies there, which the old district office address is listed, so those need to be changed from the middle school to gates. And then there were two, uh, exhibits in which, uh, Mr. Gross's name popped back up instead of Dr. Asmus, so we need to change those. But otherwise, um, they are substantively aligned. There's not many differences.
So you're asking that we waive the second reading?
Yep, just so we can make those edits and get them updated.
Yep. Nobody disagrees? We take the motion?
No approval of the one hundred series, um, policy review, like the revisions and additions presented, as presented to the board, waiving the second reading.
Second.
Motion is second to act on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Good job. Five point two, Longnecker agreement.
Um, so yeah, I kept the board as up to date as I've been on this. Um, just to kind of recap, we, there was a, a will following the passing of Norma Jean Longnecker, um, which named Nevada FFA as a substantial beneficiary. Um, and upon her passing, it was discovered a more recent will that was done in twenty twenty-three. Um, when we were notified, uh, there was some question as to which of those wills was valid. Um, the most valid. Um, the executor of the estate felt that there was merit in the two thousand fifteen will. Therefore, we asked legal counsel to look into those, and this has been quite a lengthy process. Um, they have come to the conclusion that the two thousand twenty-three will is valid, which Nevada FFA is not listed, and therefore, we're asking that you approve this settlement that essentially, um, accepts, indicates our accepting that the two thousand twenty-three will is valid and to release any claim otherwise.
The, the district was represented by legal, our legal counsel through the whole process.
Allers and Cooney, yes. Um, attorney was Connor Lawson that led this for the district. Pretty substantive estate. I guess we just be looking to approve the Longnecker agreement as listed in our board packet. Unless somebody's a, has legal skills or they wanna contribute.
I'll make a motion to, oh, go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlement agreement regarding the, uh, estate of Wellen Jean Longnecker that has been presented before us, uh, in tonight's board packet and reviewed by district legal counsel.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept our legal recommendation for the Longnecker agreement, and we would seek action on it. Any last thoughts or words? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda, folks. Did, did you answer page on your desk? Yeah, I saw that, so. Joe, see any bills you wanna ask about?
Uh, we do have one.
We do? Oh, they're crossing our, oh. Yes, we do. Five point three, the high school, why is it wore out after ten years? What happened?
Uh, we think that there was probably lightning involved at some point, and we've had all kinds of trouble with it.
Yeah.
We've gotten to the point that replacement parts were very expensive, and now the replacement parts were, we're not able to get them.
Okay.
Um, I updated the board on this. It's been quite some time. Uh, might have been even a year ago, up to a year ago. Um, and then Dave was just essentially waiting for summer to get this done. So with your approval, he will get this ordered tomorrow and get it taken care of.
So will you, traffic will still be able to pass coming from the north going south, as it presently exists?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a replacement, uh, without, there's no real change. It's just a replacing the system with the.
Okay.
More modern system that will work properly.
All right.
And there's two sets of gates, right? Or is it just one?
Just one.
Is there one at the north end of the?
There are, there are two, there are two. There's one out here, and then there's one back line, yeah.
Oh.
That's what I was thinking.
So you're just talking about the south?
I think it's this one, yeah. I think so.
We don't put the north ones down very often, do we?
Well, this, the, the estimate says four gates.
Uh, there might be, it might be the two, Joe, and then are, there might be, are there two cross arms on each? I haven't studied this. I, I don't know. I can't remember. I don't go that way.
Well, the north ones just are out for the most part all the time. I mean, if we have something.
I know it's been quite a journey trying to keep those alive.
Well, if that gets both sides, the north and the south, that.
The bottom part that says option upgrade the four seventeen-foot round aluminum arms to include the lead, so I bet it's just the arms. It's all just one gate system, but there's maybe four arms for some reason. I don't know. I'd have to, I'm speculating there, Joe.
Trying to, in my memory, we're replacing two sets of gates with two arms each. We must be.
Yeah, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the quote for the high school bus drive crossing arm replacement. Controlled access of the Midwest LLC, the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the, uh, the cross arm change out for the east side of the, uh, high school drive. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we got the consent agenda.
There's a little discrepancy in, in my memory and, and the minutes from our last meeting regarding the travel request for state golf. And I, and I went back to the, uh, to the video of the meeting to confirm that my memory was right. And, uh, the board did approve the overnight trips to Atlantic, even though it wasn't, didn't end up to be necessary. Um, we did not approve the overnight trip for state golf, which we, at that time, thought was in Aprils. So should that be corrected in the minutes? Certainly will be.
So Cooper's growing watermelons now?
Dr. Gray, what, what is the ASCD conference and who attended on behalf of the district?
Uh, it's a curriculum instruction conference. Um, who exactly went? I would have to talk to Dr. Asmus. I know a few of them. I don't, I know all of them, but who went?
Is this something our, that we, we send people to every year?
Um, we have for quite a while.
Bunch of the expenses were kind of lumped together in the Peacock report, and of course, that's what caught my eye.
This receipt it looked like it was Chris and Cody. I'm just guessing.
Tony, Chris, and Cody?
There were, there were teachers.
Oh, okay.
Twenty. Yeah, I'd be curious to know how many people went.
Yep.
That was a substantial expense.
I'll let you know. What's a Sally Sally program?
Uh, there's lady over there, Ames, who I know, she occasionally does clown things. I don't think she was doing clown over at elementary.
Okay.
Program for the elementary. Looked like there were some Peacock charges on, on, uh, March eleven and twelve that were. Looks like there were some P card charges on, on, uh, March eleven and twelve that were reimbursed back.
You talking about mine, Joe? I had a, something that never happened to me before on a, I believe it was a Saturday or Sunday. And, uh, my P card is the same color as my home credit card. I keep the P card in the back. I don't know how the P card got into the front. But I noticed when I went to, I believe I went to Ace Hardware, Lowe's. Uh, well, I don't remember, but I know one page that's on. But I know that I went to like Ace, Lowe's, and I think Casey's. And walking out of my third stop, I realized, uh, what had happened. So yes, I wrote the district, uh, checks with the receipts for all of those.
I guess you didn't do it down Prairie Meadows, so could have been worse.
So yeah, I bought, I bought my lumber for one, another raised bed with, uh, my P card accidentally. As well as some gas and a couple of items at Ace.
Steve was testing you, Joe. You passed.
Yeah, yeah. That's, and yeah, my entire career, I've never done that one before, so.
Well, all right. So Brian, as you, uh, start to end your tenure and, uh, fiscal is wrapping up, how are we doing?
Not seeing any huge expenses to revenues or, or are we looking good? Medicare's down, though. Big payment for Medicare. It's passed me for ninety thousand dollars. So that's, that's helping that out quite a bit. I'm not seeing any, any issues as far as decline in the, in the fund balance or anything.
Okay. You got some pretty good reinvestment rates, don't we?
Part of the reason, we're supposed to provide this to the board every month. And part of the reason I provided it this month is because I purchased treasury bills at the state program. Something I'd never done before, but it was by far and away the highest rate. They were only three months old.
And those dollars that are go to, that are put back into the general?
That's correct.
Okay. So we've got all the contracts done and signed out and everything. I know we've kind of had some...
Yeah, we had a few that we had done.
There's a couple still looking at, coaching things and...
All right, well, I'm watching, so I know people like to get the contracts.
There'll be at least a couple coming in.
All right. Anybody else see anything in regards to fundraisers, overnights or anything?
Mills School fundraiser is something that we, they did before, correct?
They've done it several years now, yeah. I'd say probably four or five years at least.
That's approximately what they've been getting every year. So, um, I tend to call thousands.
I think so, yeah.
I'll move approval, the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the consent agenda as is presented tonight.
With, with the correction delivered minutes?
Um, yes. As the aforementioned correction was related to the business office. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eight point one, board member comments? Did you make your tea time?
Yeah.
Kudos to everybody that did the graduation yesterday. That was a large class. A lot of people there.
It was, it kept moving. It's good.
Yeah.
Matthew has Will Baumann's oldest brother in his class, so grew up with Will, being Will. And oh my God, and I'm just sitting there thinking of all the years I watched that kid be his, be who he is. So I'm thinking whatever he says or whatever he does will not surprise me. And he did a very good job.
Board member, board calendar, our next meeting will be on the third of June. Can't believe we're talking about June already, but here we go. So, are we gonna be, everybody gonna be able to be here?
Yeah.
Wouldn't miss it for the world.
That's why they keep voting you on this.
Is it, uh, will the evaluation be on the third?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Well.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Good meeting. Nice little entertainment on intermission there with the technology.